It was up, it was up. It's like, I'm going to toss it. It's like.
Thank you. Good evening. Online board members, can you hear me, please?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you. I call this meeting to order Tuesday, October fourteenth, the regular board meeting. Dr. Joyner, I ask for you to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you very much. I do want to begin today with a brief moment of silence, just in recognition of students' lives that have been affected recently. And I recognize that the moment of silence does not change what has happened and what is happening. And I do want to acknowledge that so much has transpired. So if we could, please just take a moment of silence. Thank you. Now we'll enter into public participation, and I will offer this opening. Welcome to the Board of Education Regular Meeting. Regular meetings are a time for the board to conduct its business. As a board of education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. The board may hear public participation for up to sixty minutes. Public participation shall be limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. One speaker cannot yield their time to another speaker. There will be no responses this evening to any questions or concerns raised. They will be referred to the administration for review. As adults, we serve as positive role models for our students. Please be respectful of people. We ask speakers to not make defamatory comments or use abusive or vulgar language. Dr. White, are we ready for public comment and participation?
Uh, need just one moment.
Thank you.
While we're waiting, man, I have a point of personal privilege.
Yes, Dr. Joyner.
The comment is a privilege, and organizations or groups are not advised to have speakers that are redundant. If you, it would be better to select a person to represent a particular point of view. We certainly would entertain points of views that vary within an organization, but for people to come up time after time and say the same thing is really an abuse of the privilege, and I would respectfully request that that not be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner.
Our first speaker is Amy Fox.
Thank you.
Right there. There we go. Thank you. All right. My name is Amy Fox. I am a science teacher at the Co-op School. As a district, our two biggest goals are attendance and academic achievement. Unfortunately, I'm finding it impossible to meet either of those goals when my students aren't even able to get into the classroom on time. Our first class block begins at seven thirty, yet many of my students are not arriving until seven fifty or even eight o'clock. That means that almost half of the first instructional block is lost before we even begin. As a teacher, I am left with two options. Start my class with only two or three students present, requiring the late arrivals to make up missed work later, or wait until the majority of my students arrive, causing us to lose momentum and fall behind on required content. Neither option supports learning or the district goals. For many students, their lateness isn't due to a lack of effort. It's because the school buses are not getting them to school on time. The school doors open at seven AM so that students can secure their phones in their yonder pouches and get the free breakfast they are entitled to. But when the buses don't arrive till seven forty or later, students still need to go through security and get breakfast before coming to class. I don't want students sitting in class hungry. Hungry kids can't learn. I've spoken with my principal, who confirmed that the bus schedule is beyond his control. Transportation services are contracted through First Student, which means it is the district's responsibility, specifically the superintendent's office, to enforce that contract and ensure buses are arriving on time. If First Student cannot meet its contractual obligations, then that contract should be reevaluated or replaced with a provider who can. We invest significant funds in student transportation. It is only fair to ask, who is holding the bus company accountable? We all share the same goal, improving attendance and supporting student learning, but those goals can't be met if students can't physically get into the building and into their classrooms on time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jessica Ferraro. Ms. Ferraro, you may speak.
Hello, how's it going? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you see me? I'm confused, sorry.
No, you can only be heard when you're speaking from the pad of.
Okay, hi. My name is Jessica Ferraro. I went to Nathan Hale, and I grew up in Morris Cove my whole life. And now my son is a student at Nathan Hale Middle School, and we love it there. I found out at the beginning of the year that his teacher resigned last year, his special education teacher, and I was just wondering why they haven't replaced her yet, because he has an IEP, which, as you all know, he's required to get these one-on-one services, and he struggles. So we were just wondering when she was gonna, she or he was gonna be replaced. Because he needs, he needs help bad, and it's, and it's not fair to his teacher too, because she's overwhelmed with so many students, and she could use the help getting him the help. So, uh, when is, um, when are they going to replace the teacher? Hello?
Thank you for your comment. I'll refer to the superintendent for a response.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. President, that concludes all raised hands and signed in speakers.
Thank you very much, Dr. White, and thank you for those who participated in public comment. I also shared that Dr. Negron is on her way and will be joining virtually shortly. Next on the agenda, I have the approval of the minutes of September twenty-second.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve the minutes of September twenty-second.
Second. Thank you. That's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Ms. Cologne is not here. Mr. Ailey is not here. Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion carries. Next is the personnel report. Uh, Mr. Wilcox?
I move we approve the action items of the superintendent's personnel report.
Thank you. That's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? We'll vote. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez? Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion carries. And Ms. Downer, your microphone is just really low. I can, I can hear you, but I don't know that it's coming through on the recording. I'll keep going, though.
Okay.
Thank you. Next is the FNO report. Mr. Wilcox?
All right. Before I get started, is there anything anybody would like moved separately? Hearing seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and make the main motion, and that is I move that we approve the three abstracts, the three agreements, the one amendment, the seven purchase orders, and the two contracts as outlined on our agenda.
Second.
Thank you. That's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? We'll vote. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion carries. Our students are not here for a students' report. And we will wait for the superintendent's report.
Mr. Chair, can we amend the agenda so that we can continue with the business of the board until she's able to get on?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, which would, what's, what's the next one after her? I, I didn't get it on my iPad. What's the next agenda item?
It's the president's report, then teaching and learning. We can do it before the executive session.
Okay, I, I move to move up the president's report. I, I move to move up the entire agenda pending the superintendent's being able to get on. Once she gets on, we should refer to her for the next agenda item, if that's clear.
Point of order.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think it's necessary to do a, a change in the agenda. The chair can call items however the chair sees.
Thank you very much, Mayor Elicker. Let's make sure we remember that for next time.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I need all the help I can get. Much appreciated. Yes, there is not a president's report tonight. Teaching and learning report?
Just briefly, I visited Hill House today, and I was, I was very much pleased at what they're doing now with vocational education in the old voc wing. What I wanted to do is remind the board that that wing of the school was specifically designed for vocational education. Any other use would undercut the ability of the vocational education program to expand at Hill House. And I would like for the superintendent and the board to keep that in mind if there's an attempt to repurpose that space for something else. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Any discussion? Next, the facilities naming committee report. Dr. Joyner?
We have some, I'm asking for official recommendations, but there are one, two, three, four people that I have had discussions about regarding naming facilities or building after them. We already have a building named after Dr. Mayo, but there were two other superintendents in our history that served at high levels, Gerald Tarazi and John Dow. And I'm getting some, I actually had a funeral. I got some suggestions about naming something after the two of them. And of course, Michael Mangillo is the person responsible for vocational education at Hill House. And Edmund Love Jr. was his star teacher. He taught carpentry. And a number of the top carpenters, carpenters in the city now are his former students. But Ms. Mangillo was the person that hired Mr. Love, and he's the person that had probably the most robust vocational educational program of any regular high school. Because of course, the vocational schools like Eli Whitney have more, more offerings. But they had about nine different vocational offerings. And they also had the space program. Some of, some of, some of our employees were in that program. And that offered real world, world work opportunities for students. And it also gave them an opportunity to earn wages while they were in school. So what I want to do is formalize it with those individuals that have suggested those names. But I also think that we might need to take a look at that policy again to make sure that it works for its intended effects. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Any discussion? Thank you. Mr. Ailey, thank you very much. I'm glad you're here.
Sorry for being late.
No problems. Great to see you. Is there a students' report that you would like to give?
Yes, Dr. White, if you could pull up the slides, if you don't mind. Uh, to your new dash haven.
We can come back.
Yeah, you can come back to it.
To this report. Mr. Wilcox, Head Start Report, the Citywide School Building Report, the Finance Report, and I'll ask you to help me with the Food Service Report.
All right, thank you. The Head Start Report will be brief because we haven't met yet. Since our last meeting, we will be meeting this coming Thursday at five PM. And as far as the Citywide School Building Committee Report, we did meet last Thursday. I recommend everybody check out the report that's posted online and the meeting recording. In addition to, I mean, if you haven't noticed it yet, there is new formats to that report, a lot more information, including like cost information as to projects that have been completed, and they're gathering the cost information for a lot of those projects. We have a sense of you know, how much some of these facilities related things cost, and some of this stuff is not very visible. I mean, a lot of things about facilities is only visible when it's not working, and it's not necessarily visible when it is working as intended. So in addition to that, there is also a new page there listing out the process for mold testing and the process of when people put in a work order, how the vendor goes and evaluates the mold, does the remediation. So recommend anybody with interest in that, take a look at that. There is information presented there, and there was some discussion in the meeting. And another thing is that Dr. White also mentioned a concerted effort by the schools where he's having people going around and doing a survey to make sure every single exterior light is operational, and if not, that parts are ordered and/or a plan is made. And then also looking at tree trimming in some of the parking areas and other places where trees have overgrown. So I believe he mentioned combination of working with the city and working, identifying a vendor for some of the tree trimming that can't be done by existing staff because it's kind of high up or you need special equipment. So more to come on that. But that's just some examples of some of the extra stuff that's been added to that report. And then finally, the finance and operations, we did have our regular meeting and in addition to our typical action items that we've already passed tonight, there was also the change order report, I believe was presented, if I remember correctly, which has the information about all the change orders during the last fiscal year, and that should be posted. And in addition to the information for the last fiscal year, also the spreadsheet or the information that's posted has for the last, I think, three or four years since we started to present that report. So those are examples of some of the things that are happening there. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Seeing none. Dr. White?
I just asked Mr. Ali for access to when we're going to require access.
Great, thank you. Dr. Benitez, the governance report, and then I'll move to the Food Service Task Group Report. Dr. Benitez?
Yes, good evening. I would like Ms. Downer to provide us with a report tonight, even though we do have a presentation that's going to be done by the superintendent and her team. I would like her to talk about what was done in the meeting. She's having trouble with her mic. So, we met at the I'm so sorry. The, I'm still in transit.
Ms. Downer, is your mic correct or is it the same?
So, it's the same. Can you hear me?
It's a lot better, yes.
All right, we, we met about the climate policy, and we were actually, we had a presentation on the climate policy, but we're going to be bringing it tonight for the first reading.
Great, thank you very much. And we can maybe hold discussion to when that presentation comes, if there's any discussion.
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Food Service Task Group Report?
So the Food Service Task Force did meet, and the information should be, the minutes should be posted by now. In addition to some of the standing items about just how things are going, we also had updates on how things are in terms of the life-threatening food allergies. We also had a report from our partners, from Witnesses to Hunger and from United Way about the food gap subgroup as the plans are coming together. That's a great effort, and it's a lot of partners, includes the city, includes these groups that I've already mentioned, Connecticut Food Bank and others to help with the problem of, you know, food, around food insecurity during the times when students can't get a, a meal or several meals a day at, at the schools. In addition to that, we also talked about adding to the, you know, agenda starting next time about some ideas as to where we want to go with food service. So instead of just saying how things are, like what are the goals, we had a discussion and asked about, let's, let's dream a little bit in terms of, as we're taking a look at funding gaps around staffing, around facilities, and then also let's also take a look at it around food, of what we would be able to do in terms of moving away from some of the unitized packaged food into incorporating some other foods, building on what the department's already doing in terms of salad bars and so on, just what that would look like. And so if people have interest in that, I suggest one of the future meetings or to pass that information on to Mr. Young or Dr. White. And I think that's everything from that meeting.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none. Mr. Ailey for the students' report, and thank you, Dr. White.
Did you have access to it? My bad. Um, so, oh, you can just, yeah, my bad. Just pause it on each slide, if you don't mind. Thank you. I forgot to put on, all right, like right there. So we have some updates from the student government. We have some leadership initiatives that we are going on with the district, and we have upcoming events and campaigns to share.
So we're beginning the process of the Climate Liaisons and the Social Emotional Learning Ambassadors around the district. We have the last student government meeting, we congratulated the students who got their roles, and starting next week, we should be getting those datas, the data from the students. So far, some of the schools are still identifying the cabinet members for their perspective schools, sometimes it depends on if it's like a freshman class or if it is like a senior class. So hopefully that gets in order for the next student government meeting. And during those meetings, we're still going to be focusing on communication between students and district leaders. So, so far, I've gotten positive feedback from the phone policy, people are more engaged. The last council meeting, it's been very much great, didn't expect that, myself, I didn't expect that it would go this well. The shared table policy also is continuing through the process, and the Food Service Leader, Mr. Young, accepted the offer, and we're going to be continuing the legislation for that. So in the past, we relied on protests and campaigns to secure our funding and have like student voice in many activities, and again, protests and everything else. And now this year, we're going to be focusing, we're going to be focusing more about experiences, suggestions, and what we should be currently, like the current issues in our district and how we're supposed to solve it as students, instead of focusing on protests and other things. So we're going to be having a kindness campaign and bullying awareness, this is more in the role for the SCL ambassadors and leaders around the district. So we're going to be focusing, there's going to be like a week full of fun activities around the high schools and middle schools and hopefully elementary school as well. It's going to be running from the 27th of October to the 31st, with 31st being, you know, Halloween customs. Thirty-three students from the council are contributing to this, to this campaign awareness. And we will be having, we will have like aid from district leaders to make it more fun, engaging, and aligned with our educational, educational pattern. So last year during the summer, we did like Student Closet where we were giving away clothes and miscellaneous items for the students to take, mainly the students, other people can join in. We're planning to have that, our second, our second event, hopefully we're getting space towards November, depends on there's availability or not. So we're still in the process of it, but we're probably going to roll it for November. This one was from, this is like a project a little bit from me and the Science Supervisor, Mr. McCain, where we're giving updates about the Bio Labs Bio City partnership that we currently have. Oh, for a little bit, all right. So with predicted students, about 20 to 30 students in attendance to the program, we basically have been doing research all around our city, specifically in the science pathway, we have been collaborating, the student, the staff, the supervisor, we've been basically having the best of opportunities, some of us are taking classes during the night, some of us are having current research, and some of us are basically changing our city for the better. And that's pretty much it. So at the end, we basically are going to have leadership initiatives, the student voice is growing, and we're shaping a connective, inclusive district.
Great, thank you. Any discussions? Yes.
What this young man and what the students are doing is a throwback to the 70s when students were very active in the community in a positive and productive way. I commend you and your peers for this, thank you.
Thank you. I have a question, grateful to hear about the Kindness and Anti-Bullying Campaign, and my question is about the longevity of it. Are you thinking to begin in October and keep some of the campaign going for the rest of the academic year or?
There's going to be more events going on, most of that's going to be towards Ms. Monica Abbott, we're still preparing everything, but this is going to be the first event that we're going to have for the year, and we're mostly going to have monthly events, hopefully.
Yeah, and what is this one shaping out to be? Is it kind of in-person, social media, printed graphics?
It's mostly going to be in-person.
Okay.
For the, most of the events.
Great, thank you. And for the Student Closet, are there donations coming to you, or how can people donate now or later?
Well, until we get the date, which is probably going to be like mid to the end of November, the week before, we're going to have like a day where people can donate clothing at a certain place until we find it. We still have some from the last event, so we're definitely going to be using those.
Okay, great. And if you, you may have already done this, but there are businesses, clothing companies that might be donating.
We have, we're getting into contact with them. We know, we had a partnership with UNH, some, what's it called? I forgot, there were some other things, some district ones that are coming in.
Okay, great, thank you for your work. Any further discussion? Mr. Wilcox?
Just real quick, one is just a request that the presentation is posted as part of the meeting materials, in case people want to take a look at that in more detail. And then second thing is, just another thing to kind of keep on the agenda at some point is student elections for next year. I know sometimes there's been a desire to have things start a little bit earlier and kind of have people thinking about it through the year, so that when it is time to start the process, that there's, there's some people that are already thinking about that. So just a recommendation, I imagine you all are already doing it because you all are continuing the, being very active, and so, which is greatly appreciated, but just something to kind of be thinking about, thinking about your, you know, the next people.
What do you mean by student, question, I mean, by student election, do you mean school-wide or district-wide or?
I'm sorry to be specific at the, for the student member of the school, your position here on the board.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, so, I mean, sometimes we only have one person run or only one or two people and, you know, something that, you know, making sure everybody understands the process and be thinking about it, that their voice is also important and that they might want to think about, so that they could start planning for that. Because as you know, having done it is, it is a bit of work, gather all those signatures and the support and everything, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is our Superintendent's Report, Dr. Negron.
Thank you, Dr. Yarborough and board members. Tonight, ahead of presenting the Governance Report related to the policy, we wanted an opportunity to share with you some components of the policy that is coming before you for the first reading. So for that, we're going to have Tiffany Jackson make the presentation, and she's going to be ready to do so.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jackson.
So before we get started, I just want to say that we're so happy, thank you for approving the Personnel Report, because we have someone who's with us who will be helping us in this work, Mr. Christian Tavarez, if you don't mind standing up, he is now our new school district climate person who will be working in conjunction with Ms. Monica Abbott to help us around some of this culture and climate work. So we're very happy that we have helped, that you guys approved the, the Personnel Report, and then just going back to the Kindness Campaign as we're getting set, set up, the intent is for us to be able to kind of flip bullying on its head and really continue this campaign throughout and connect it to some of our things like our SCL Day, et cetera, et cetera. So hopefully this will continue to live on, so thank you for that. So the school culture, climate policy, this has been before you all previously, but one of the things I will tell you is that in the state of Connecticut, we've been continuing to unpack this policy, really, what does this policy mean? As of July of 2021, July 1, 2025, every school district has to have a school climate policy. So just going back to our previous page as it relates to our strategic operating, strategic operating plan, everything that we're doing within our strategic operating plan as it relates to culture and climate, it's all built on the foundational work of the school climate plan. The biggest thing to know within this is that really with the school climate plan, the notion and intent is not just about the compliance pieces that become very complicated in the reporting, but really this is about the State Department of Education really making sure that we as school districts are looking at school, culture, and climate, how we're working preventatively, not reactionary, how we look at elevating student voice by utilizing the school climate data, looking at the sense of belonging, so that this way we're creating plans around that, looking, as I mentioned to before, really just looking at how we are building out school culture and climate in general. And the good news is for New Haven Public Schools, again, even talking with our attorneys, we are kind, we're well-developed, we've been doing a lot of work around social emotional learning, we've been doing a lot of work around restorative practices, so there's a lot of foundational work that is, helps us to enact this plan. And I'm sorry, this is Ms. Monica Abbott that you're pouring in, go ahead, sorry. Be careful.
Okay, okay. A few key, oops, a few key points of the new climate policy, as Tiffany says, it really relates to the work we've been doing around building culture and climate, but there are some pieces that we do have to make sure that we're doing. So the first is to ensure that we have a district-level support person, which is called the School Climate Coordinator, that will go out into the schools and support them. Each building has to name a climate specialist in their building. Additionally, they have to, if they don't already, which most schools already had a Culture and Climate Committee, but if they don't, they have to ensure that they do. They also have to create what's called a School Climate Action Plan, which includes reporting of regular data points throughout the year. We have to continue with the climate survey, which again, we've already been doing that, so that's a good part. More staff development around topics such as social emotional learning, I'll get into more of those soon. And then finally, the biggest part of this that Tiffany was talking about is the bullying definition has changed, they've reduced it and put less language in it, but with that, they've also introduced something called the challenging behavior form. And bullying actually falls under a category of a challenging behavior, and eventually the state will produce a specific bullying form for challenging behavior, but at this time, we've created our own version as we want to start implementing the policy right away. So we'll get into that a little bit more soon. Okay, with the School Climate Coordinator, their role really is to support the schools with proactive preventative intervention, as well as training and supports around the culture and climate development, again, things we've been doing, but this gives us the opportunity to really work with more schools and support them in this. They also work with them in creating their implementation action plan, climate action plan, to ensure that it meets the needs of not only addressing sense of belonging data, but also behavioral data, and ensuring that their action plans have information about that, as well as going out two times a year to ensure that those plans are being followed and supporting and modifying and providing resources if needed. The last part is also working with other departments to possibly collect some more data when we're doing walkthroughs, et cetera. The school climate specialist of each school at this time is typically the principal or the assistant principal, and their, their role really is to oversee that, one, they do have that climate committee, two, that their action plan is addressing the things that I said, sense of belonging and behavioral data, but the biggest part of that is that they are the ones that really know the steps to the challenging behavior process, and really making sure that all the steps happening and all the follow-up forms, letters to parents, et cetera, as well as the supports that are needed for the children that may be exhibiting those behaviors, and I'll get into that more in a minute. Oops, sorry. Nope, up here, so this, oh, nope, oh, did I want, oh, yes, actually. Can I do that from here? We want to, okay, we were going to show you an example of one of the action plans, but what we did was we adapted it to be exactly like the Strategic Operating Plan and School Improvement Plan, so it's not making it too cumbersome, it already matches the work they're doing, and connects to some of the work we've been doing for the past year of the plan around attendance, et cetera, sense of belonging. The committee part, again, some of the schools already have it, we just are asking that they meet monthly, and if they already have an established meeting, that they dedicate at least 45 minutes of a meeting that they already have to specifically speaking about their climate implementation plan, the data around behavior, and the data around sense of belonging, and really ensuring that they're working together and that all stakeholders are aware of the initiatives they're taking to promote a positive culture in their school. The next one? Yeah, I can continue though, all right. So the next part of the plan, and again, the policy is great because we've been doing some of this work in the district for a couple of years, Tiffany will explain some of that later, but they require professional development around certain topics. And again, we already have restorative practices built in, it's just asking that we continuously work to continue to provide restorative practice training for our staff, social emotional learning, as well as other specific types of interventions and behavioral supports for students and for the staff to use in their class. So again, they should be evidence-based, research-based types of interventions, and we've again had some of those, and we're continuously trying to grow. So our mental health first aid trainings we're doing, we're continuing those and really focusing again where we're looking at the needs of the student from a holistic approach, rather than saying this is something that needs to be fixed, it's more of a cultural, climate type of support where we're, we're providing interventions to support the students with whatever needs they may have. Last year, we introduced something called Supporting Students with Complex Needs. Again, that's giving the teachers a tool to understand why the students may be coming to their classrooms with certain behaviors, and then understanding some strategies that they may use to support them with de-escalating or finding calming strategies and tools that they can use when they're having trouble dealing with their emotions. And then the other one is related to really de-escalating strategies in general, understanding that there's an escalation process, and sometimes when a student gets two-point, you might not be able to reach them. So we're trying to train, where can you actually make the most impact when supporting a student with a lot of needs? The last part is our PMT training, which we have been doing, and really, even though there is a part of that that is around seclusion and restraint, that's a teeny tiny part of it. The rest of it really is about relationship building, getting to know the people, the student, and really finding the best person to help support that student with their needs. So we'll continue those.
One thing I just wanted to say, just regarding some of, as Monica mentioned, it's a requirement to have both social emotional learning practices and restorative practices work embedded within your plan within the district that you have to provide it. But one thing that we know that we're on the right track as far as the training is concerned, as far as how meaningful it is for teachers, when we first started doing mental health first aid training, you know, we were out there recruiting, but more and more, we have waiting lists for everything that we're doing at this point in time. So the mental health first aid, working with students with complex needs, we actually co-construct that professional development with a child psychiatrist in ACES. So that, again, that's another training that we continue to work on, we continue to work with the folks at Yale Child Development Center. So there's a lot of training that we continue to have that puts us in a good place, but I just wanted to mention that those professional development offerings, we, they, they continue to grow, we're not having to find people, we actually have waiting lists for, for some of the training that's been in place. Go ahead, Monica, I'm sorry.
And the last one is about the challenging behavior, and I'll go into that again. Because this policy, we knew it was coming, some of the supports that we provided back in January, we introduced the policy at the Superintendent's Meeting to let principals know that this was coming and how we could best support them, and we started then looking at data and starting to create mock versions of what they anticipated for the next year using last year's data. And then we started in the And then we started in the spring and summer, meeting one-to-one with principals to help them build out their action plans. And then at the superintendent meeting in August, we had an educational attorney with us who presented the policy and went through all the steps and processes again with us. Since then, we've been providing additional supports. We've had office hours with an educational attorney. We did last week, a training with the climate specialist in each building to really walk them through the process of challenging behavior. Because the process, we found we needed to go back and modify, and we know, just like students, adults learn differently, so when you're looking at all those law things and policy, it gets confusing. So we wanted to provide a bunch of different types of resources so that if you're a visual learner, we created a flow chart. If you're more of a check-off person, we created a step-by-step checkbox that you can go while people are learning the process. And then eventually, just like the students, will gradually take those away and they'll be able to do it independently. And we're going to continue to offer that. We have another one coming up in November that will open up to other people, as well as to bring questions now that they've had an opportunity to actually do it.
And so, just as mentioned before, we're almost at the conclusion of our presentation, that we've been starting this work in two thousand and eight. So we, actually before that, I think Dr. Joyner, you've been around when we've been working with Yale Child Development Center and making sure that we have these places in our schools where we have the triple S T meetings, where we're talking about children who may have some challenging social emotional behavioral concerns and how we're addressing their needs. But even since two thousand and eight, really looking at the overall culture and climate in the building, we've been partnering, looking at positive behavior intervention support. Since that time, we've included social emotional learning and restorative practices. We then with our school, with our strategic operating plan, then now have district committees that are focused specifically on the work of culture and climate. And then lastly, having the school climate policy that really solidifies some of the work that we're already doing around culture and climate, and really just a process by which if we have children who are struggling, how are we managing those pieces? And then a process for us to continue really looking at data and how we're monitoring our process along the way.
And our next steps really revolve around providing those supports for the schools, the schools that are already in PBIS, that have already completed the five, four years of training. We're putting them in a multi-tiered advanced tiers to help sustain and make sure that we go back and make sure that they're still doing the work. And if anything changes, based on population, every five years you should look at to make sure that what you're doing really matches your student population. We're also going to work, we continue to work with the restorative team on refining those processes, the data process, how we collect data, what we're reporting, continuing with the, the, so, the professional development that we're offering, including the challenging behavior, and then also really doing more with the data and to be able to collect the data around the preventative side and the proactive tier-one supports that we're providing. Are they working based on some of the tiered fidelity inventory, which assesses the culture of a school? So we're going to continue to find data points, and again, with the work that they've been doing with attendance, we really are going to bring those three things to the table all at the same time. Attendance, behavioral, academics, and I'm missing one, but, and altogether, so that we can look at the whole child and really determine, are we matching the best intervention with the student and their need based on what we know about what's going on in their life? And then again, really providing direct support to the schools that might need a little bit more support based on their culture and climate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any discussion, Dr. Joyner?
Committee, I'd be interested in, in three things. One, do we have mandated professional development for building leaders?
As in, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know if you're asking me like to answer that, that question now.
I think you can.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. There are a set of professional development offerings that have been non-negotiable for building administrators, and I, I will tell you that our building administrators, just as an example, for this particular work, there were twenty-six schools that we're on that really were eager to really understand and learn more about that. So we've been even working individually and collectively with our building administrators, if that answers.
I believe in my ass that is because restorative practice is, is a mandate, which means that you don't have the option not to do it. But I think there's been uneven application of that. And the end result is we want an environment where teachers can teach in peace and where students can learn in peace, and that should never be compromised. I'll talk to you more later about why I asked that question. The second one is, do you have a copy of training curriculum and a calendar of training events that's readily available? Just yes or no?
Yeah, we have some, and then the, the ones on specific challenging behavior, they're going to be forthcoming based on the needs that we see, but we have a set date for those.
So that's, that's generative based on what pops up?
Particular, but in regards to like culture and climate strategies, we do have some set like PBIS dates and et cetera, things like that. Mental health first aid and the supporting students.
Things that we mentioned we do have.
Right, right, that's great. And, and I'd like to, to meet with you to look at some of that stuff. And the other part is that, do you have standard instrumentation to measure the impact of what we're doing?
Yeah. So do you want to talk a little about the tier fidelity inventory? Go ahead.
Yes, we have what's called a tiered fidelity inventory, and that goes through a series of, we actually go out into the, the school building and we talk to students, we talk to staff, and we gather anecdotal information. Then we also look at their, their own data, their procedures, their agenda, and you, they get rated on tier-one, tier-two, tier-three, and that is used as a tool to also help them create their, their action plan. So the schools that are doing PBIS for the last one to five years, they have data year to year that they could actually use to see where do we have to improve. And the great thing about it is that it's expanded. It used to be more just building-based. Now there's actually a component where you go into the classrooms to ensure that it's also feeding from your overall school theme into each of the classrooms so that it's a widely spread and everybody really truly lives and breathes what they believe their culture and climate is.
One last question. Does teacher perception factor into that? And is there a way that you measure that, to make sure that end users?
Yes, yes.
The ones that we, we want the intended consequences to be there for them?
We do, and we gather feedback from staff. There's like a type of survey that goes out, like your readiness to actually apply and use restorative, use SEL, and really your understanding, and that's some of the professional development we do, not only around teaching and supporting students with their social emotional understanding, but also the adults, and it does take some time for some of our adult learners.
I know it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Dr. Benitez?
Yes, thank you very much. I, I just wanted to point out that, and thank you, Dr. Joyner, for the questions. What I wanted to point out is that this is some of the work that we have been trying to develop with, within the governance committee, that when we provide the board with the policy as important as the climate policy, that we are able to have the tools, and we've done this with other, other policies this past year, but this one, we thought it was so important, and there, and it's a very fluid kind of thing, because the state continues to unpack, and we may have to come back to you if there are changes. But what we want to do is to make sure that when we have a policy, we tighten it with what practices can the staff establish, so that they are able to, in fact, not only implement the policy, but measure the, the accuracy of how they are doing that. So I just wanted to let you know about that. We continue to try to do this as much as possible, and of course, not a perfect process, but I think this one has gotten as close as we can hope, with the help of the superintendent and the staff, the, and Ms. Jackson have been very good at making sure that we can use this as a good example of how the board and the staff can work together to make sure that implementation of policy is on the ground and ready when we approve it.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes, thank you very much for this presentation and all the work that goes into, you know, behind this and the policies report and all the work. So a couple of comments and a question or two. Just, you know, follow up on the professional development. Ms. Jackson, you did mention that there's, you know, twenty-six or so schools that were really interested in this, and so I would hope that we're, you know, pulling from the places where things are going really well, and I know that's a goal for a lot of professional development, but, you know, bringing in the administrators, teachers, other staff members that were, that seemed to have a gift for this and tapping them to make it completely as, as relevant as possible. One or two other little things here. I'm also thinking as I was listening to the presentation about this, the staffing and thinking in terms of the staffing guidelines, and I don't know if anybody's ever heard me mention the staffing guidelines report that the district does every spring or late winter, that talks about the, the hundreds of staff, that if we were more equitably funded in this wealthy state, that we would have people. And I remember that there were dozens related to this area around restorative practices, behavior interventionalists, et cetera. And so I just would recommend that as that report is updated for, you know, maybe in February, that, that these, this new, new approach is, is reflected in the, the staffing gaps, because I imagine, you know, the best plans are great, but if you don't have the people to actually do it, then it's just one more thing on busy people in addition to everything else, even though the goals are, you know, required and laudable and will help reduce conflict in the classes, in the classrooms and in schools, and hopefully after school and in the city, as it, as it, as the students and everybody gains this information and skills. So I'm hoping that that also, just to touch on the restorative practice point, the twenty-six schools or so seems to me connects up with the twenty-some schools that are already on board with restorative practices, that have implemented things, that are doing the circles, et cetera, which leaves fifteen or so, or thirteen or so, that it's not working. And so I'm hoping this helps move that out into the other schools, so that this is more across the board, still here just concerning things after, four years after the new code of conduct was passed, where some of this stuff just isn't happening in some schools. So I'm hoping that this extra focus will help that. It's just editorial on my part, but I would like to see this kind of information in the, we ask for, in the student discipline report after the second and fourth marking periods, that we see some of this reflected in that, so I'm hoping that that does. So the, the final thing is just to ask about, mention the code of conduct. Do you anticipate that there's going to be any needs for changes in the code of conduct, update it to match this policy, or?
I, I don't think, I'm just going to answer two things. I just want to make sure that I'm not misrepresenting a group of administrators with the twenty-six. Those were the ones that were on, so I want to miss, don't misrepresent, because all of our administrators, as we've been going out even individually, have been more than gracious enough to talk with us about some of these things and, you know, varying degrees of implementation. So I just want to make sure that I'm not misrepresenting if there wasn't at a meeting that they were not interested. So I just first wanted to, to make sure, just to clarify that piece, because we've gotten responses for every single last one of them, but definitely different degrees of implementations of everything. I don't necessarily think that there's a lot of change in the, in the code of conduct. I think the way that we actually calibrated, right, and actually get it in front of folks, the, the code of conduct and reminders of the code of conduct and how we, you know, put these things together, I think we're going to have to do more of that. And just as a reminder, I'll just give you, for instance, we were talking with one principal, even as we're talking about the school, culture, climate policy, one thing that they said, oh, I'm going to pull out the New Haven, the code of conduct and really go through that with my staff. And that was a part of their culture and climate work. So I don't think, or anticipate, because there's a lot of work that's been done, just so that everyone knows with the code of conduct, that really looks at a tiered approach. And that's what a lot of this work is about, a tiered approach. There's been a lot of people who have restorative language in, in our code of conduct, a lot of work on tiered responses, I think is just really about the calibration and how we bring all these things together, more so than, than any big changes.
All right, thank you for that. And also, yeah, I wasn't, everybody wants a culture and climate to work well in the school, so I wasn't insinuating, I wasn't trying to insinuate that, that there were some principals or other administrative staff that don't want that. I was just speaking specifically around the restorative practices, which I attribute a lot of that to, maybe a hundred percent of it to, the fact that we just can't hire enough people to come in and do the work, do the training, run the circles, and then also have that, you know, being able to work with a student, just takes extra people to be able to take a student out into a hallway to help them regulate or deal with some of these issues, and, you know, we just don't have the people for that. So, thank you.
Thank you to, yes, yes, thank you to this committee, I have a question, I have questions, to, to the committee and the governance committee for the work that you've done on this, and, and Dr. Benitez, your, your point is taken about having a policy, but also having an implementation plan that makes everything to work. So I thank everyone for their work on that. A comment and three quick questions. One, I look forward to receiving updates on Mr. Tabarez and the contribution that he'll bring to this, the program and work. So thank you. I don't know if that means I won't see you anymore at FNO. I may have to join another committee so I can hear your voice, but we'll work on that. Three questions, quick ones. One is about data collection, so the recurrence of student data, school data collection. What would be the opportunity for schools to keep a pulse on the climate of their school throughout a school year?
Yep. So I think just to your point, looking at some of the metrics, I think that even in some of the tiered fidelity inventories we're talking about, and that's not just at the schools we're utilizing PBIS, that's across the board. So a lot of this work is a part of that, really the data analysis, right, so that you're looking at what are some of the touchpoints. We actually utilize a software that actually gives you time of day, you know, location by teacher, like, you know, that gives you some of that more granular information to provide more targeted support. So a part of that is really also to how we're utilizing our data. Same way we do academic data, and we analyze academic data and makes plans, it's really given us an opportunity to dive deeper into disciplinary data, if you will, enough to be able to manage that. But that's not the only marker and metric of the school climate, and really just some of the things that I know that Gemma's team has been doing around welcoming schools and those kind of pieces. So some of those other, those other data points really and rounding those things out together, really how we look at the culture and climate.
Great. And this may be included, but if there's an opportunity for students also to give regular input into that data, like maybe we can see some predictive ways?
Go ahead, go ahead.
At the high school level, we do have SEL ambassadors, student interns, we're calling them, and then now with the addition of the student climate liaison, we are definitely going to connect them to some of that data and actually help us create some type of like walkthrough tool that we can use universally across all schools to give us another data point. So that's for high school. In some of our middle schools, they actually do invite their students to the table as representatives, if they have a middle school advisory or student government, some of them do have that, as well as the culture and climate committee, they do ask for student voice to be part of the decision-making, et cetera, in their schools. So that is coming more, and we're adding that. For some schools, they've been doing it all along, and others, it's a new process.
Okay, great, thank you. What's the opportunity for athletic staff to be a part of the collaboration? Because I imagine, one, they have their own skills, but also it could be, they could be included in the collaboration if not already?
Yeah, I think that's actually, we're just like, wow, just thinking about that too, because we do have some of our coaches who are actually employees during the day as well, so a lot of access to the training that we have here, but we haven't been intentional about just the athletic staff, so that may be something else that we can talk about. I do know that our athletic director has had several, you know, trainings, he's even done things like restorative circles, even with students and, and staff in the past, but that may be another point of connection as well, to be able to really looking how we can actually include. So thank you for that.
Great, thank you. And the last question that's come to mind is about parent caregiver, family conversations, education, that's two-way, to provide the, the additional support for students. Particularly, I was thinking about the challenging behavior form, but then also the students who may be impacted in particular- form, but then also the students who may be impacted in a particular way. Are there opportunities for that? I know it's like an additional division of work.
Yeah, there is. And I think it's a little more nuanced and student specific. There's general things that, you know, we'll share out with schools and, you know, in handbooks and things of that sort about what this process, what this is. But even as it relates to individual students, usually that's something that may be more nuanced and more specific to students, individual students.
Great. Thank you very much. Additional comments? Thank you very much for your work.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Dr. Negron?
President Yarborough, that completes the update. Again, we just wanted to have an opportunity to unpack the new policy for this opportunity for members to ask questions. I do want to also thank Tiffany Jackson, Micah Abbott, and the rest of the team. There has been an enormous amount of time invested to ensure that the New Haven Public Schools would be adequately prepared to implement the new legislative policy. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the executive session. I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1-206B and E and 1-210B4 and 10 concerning strategy and negotiations with respect to pending litigation in the matter of light versus New Haven Board of Education and discussion which would result in the disclosure of attorney-client privileged records as well as exec, executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1-206B and E and 1-210B4 and 10 concerning strategy and negotiations with respect to the pending litigation in the matter of PC-16 Doe versus Hill Regional Career High School and discussion which would result in the disclosure of attorney-client privileged records. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. That's moved. And seconded, yes. So Attorney Alexiades, who else do we bring?
Superintendent.
Superintendent.
And we also need Attorney Peter Murphy.
And Attorney Peter Murphy. Thank you. We will vote. Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. We're now in executive session. Thank you.
Board members online, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. The board has returned from executive session and no votes were taken. I have a motion to approve settlement in PC-16 Doe versus Hill Regional Career High School in accordance with the discussion in executive session and subject to approval of the city litigation settlement committee.
Second.
Thank you. That's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? See none. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer? Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion carries. I move to approve settlement in Light versus New Haven Board of Education in accordance with the discussion in executive session and subject to the approval of the city litigation settlement committee.
Second.
That's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion carries. After careful and thoughtful negotiations, Jessica Light and the New Haven Board of Education resolve Ms. Light's case civil action number three, twenty-two CV four-two-five JBA. Ms. Light has consistently served as an advocate and educator during her fifteen years with the New Haven Public Schools. The board values Ms. Light's commitment and looks forward to continuing to work together for the shared benefit of the district students. Thank you. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I second.
That's moved and seconded. Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.